Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for November 19th, 2018. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Vivier.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic from which we come, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening, so I will start out with the one for Christmas Sharing, and I would like Denise DeCiani and her entourage to come forward, please, so we can thank them officially for this wonderful effort that happens year after year after year.
Year after year.
Faithful servants, thank you so much for doing this. Christmas Sharing Week 2018, whereas Christmas Sharing -- wait a minute, I'm still getting used to this because I'm supposed to face this way. This is the camera. Sorry, nothing personal. Change, I hate it. Christmas Sharing, which began in 1969, is a community-based organization serving families within the boundaries of Community Unit School District 200, and whereas Christmas Sharing, which originally served seven families, has grown over the years and served 880 families in 2017, and whereas the economy continues to fluctuate and the effort to make Christmas a little more joyful for those in need is still present in 2018, and whereas eight churches, 20 public schools, local businesses, and other organizations collect toys, clothing, gift cards, and food for distribution in December, and now therefore I, David Albrummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim December 2nd through December 8th, 2018, as Christmas Sharing Week in Warrenville, to bring awareness that contributions made during this season of giving will help make the holiday season merrier for families who are less fortunate. Thank you all for doing this. Denise, thank you. My pleasure. Awareness, thank you. Who wants to say something? Face this way, I just learned.
Okay, I'll look at you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to introduce, you know, Denise DeCiani. She's our Coordinator at the Community Baptist Church. Laurel Lebo, she's our Coordinator at the Wellspring Church, which is over on Butterfield. Fred Olafes, everybody knows Fred, I know. He's here tonight also. Fred is always assisting with the program. We can always count on him being there. Thank you, Mayor Brummel, and council members for the proclamation. You've seen me here before, you know the story. Christmas Sharing started out with seven families from the District 200 school area. They were invited to one church to get food, warm clothing, some gift certificates at the local shops. The idea, get 'em through the winter, get 'em through the holiday season. This year, once again, we're going to have over 900 families participating in the program, and at least a third of those will be with Warrenville addresses. And when you start counting not just the children, mom and dad, maybe a grandparent or two, or an aunt, we're talking maybe 1,800 people are going to be impacted by Christmas Sharing. We're going to have these 900 families go to one of the eight churches in the Wheaton-Warnville area. Our program is going to be inviting them to come in on Friday, December 7th, and Saturday, December 8th. Now, the Warrenville families, we try to make sure that they can get to the Warrenville churches. It's just a lot more convenient for 'em. A lot of 'em have to share rides with each other. It's closer to them, so we try to make it as easy as we can to get them into the churches. When they do come, they're going to be able to pick out warm winter clothing. Every child will be able to pick out -- they'll have used toys, but the parents will be going over and picking out a new toy for them, so they can present it to 'em on Christmas. And of course, being churches, everybody leaves with some food, so we're going to be having, what is it, turkeys? Turkeys. And also food certificates.
Family foods.
From Family Foods, for the Warrenville families. Also, this, and this isn't the first year, but there's just a very generous person out there who has been able to provide a lot of new coats for all age groups, not just the kids, but mom and dad, too. So, we're looking forward to being able to provide that for everybody. I think if you've probably looked through the kids' closets lately and seen what they're wearing, you're going to say, no, you're not wearing that to school anymore, you know. We want to get you something a little bit better. We have a very strong partnership with District 200, and I'm very pleased that we have two people here from the district, and of course Jeff Shuler, the Superintendent. I love to talk about our partnership with District 200. This whole program starts with the social workers at our school. They're the ones that get the ball rolling. They identify the families, they send them the letters of interest, and explain the program, and then they collect the letters of interest and forward them on to us, so we can then invite the families. District 200 also, and I say this every year, and it's going to happen again this year, have packed the gym night, and it's on November 27th, which is a Tuesday, it's at 7:00 PM over at Hubble. It is a basketball game for Special Olympic kids at District 200 and Naperville District 203. They play a wonderful basketball game. It's just so much fun to watch 'em play. They love to play in front of a crowd, but to get in, you gotta bring a non-perishable food item. That's donated to Christmas Sharing, and you can also participate in the 50/50 raffle. So, half of those proceeds are dedicated to Christmas Sharing. So, we are on our way to having another large program, and a busy one. So, again, thank you very much for this proclamation. We're going to be putting up the picture and the proclamation on our website, which is christmas-sharing.org, and on our Facebook page, which is Christmas Sharing at Wheaton-Warnville. So, thank you very much. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. This is Barb's last year as our President for Christmas Sharing. You know, the Vice President is stepping up, and I'd also like to recognize that Fred and Nancy Olafes have -- Fred's been with us since 1999, his retirement date, and Nancy, who is not present. I met her when my child was in fourth grade and I started doing this project, but these people really have a dedication to their heart to take care of other people, and I wanted you to recognize that. And should you feel the need to come out and check out what us little elves do, don't hesitate to stop by during Christmas Sharing Week. The signs are up, you're welcome to come in and just take a peek, because it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you again. That was very persuasive. I saw someone writing a check here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They'll stick around if anybody else has their checkbook.
Can you take cash?
Yeah, or cash. Well, we're privileged tonight to have some representatives of District 200. Our Superintendent Jeff Shuler and Board Member Brad Paulson and Jenna Erickson, please come up for the proclamation for School Board Members Day. We try to do this every year to recognize the fact that these volunteers do a tremendous amount for our community. It's a very difficult job. Jeff, come on up. They couldn't do it without you. But they are volunteers, unpaid volunteers, who do an enormous amount of good for the community. We were recently rated, I believe, eighth in the state in terms of quality of our school district. That's no mean accomplishment. That doesn't happen in a vacuum. That happens because people work very hard to make it happen. So, we want to thank you for that. We appreciate your efforts, and congratulations on the referendum. That made us all smile, I think. It was a decisive vote, which shows a lot of folks are with you and the good work you do, so keep it up. And here's the proclamation. Whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities, and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for public education of their children, and whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas school board members are responsible for writing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students, and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts, and whereas school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy, they are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. Whereas school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours to public service with no compensation, and whereas employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members generously lending support and time, employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and the citizens they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. Whereas decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them at the front line of American democracy. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David Albrummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim November 15th, 2018, as School Board Members Day, as a way to honor those citizens who devote so much of their time and energy for the education of our children. Thank you all.
So, in District 200, we are known for having long board meetings, so I don't have any prepared comments for you, but we wanted to say thank you for the recognition. It's ironic that this is happening the week of Thanksgiving, because we have so much to be thankful for, including past referendums recently, very important message delivered by our community to us, and as Mayor Brummel mentioned, we're so thankful for being rated at the eighth-best school district in the state of Illinois. We know that is so much more than the school board members. It's all about the students who work so hard, the teachers, the staff, the communities, the families that support everything we try to do. So, it's been a wonderful year for us, and we love to tell people what we're doing. So, in front of you, I was suggested I drop this off. In front of you is this little card that tells you all the different ways that you can know what's going on in District 200, whether it's email, or the web, or various channels of social media. So, we're going to try to keep pushing out all the great information that our constituents do and the success that our students have, so thank you once again.
Okay, this is the part of the meeting that we set aside at every meeting for citizens' comments. We have a number of folks who've signed up this evening. When, let's see, I'll give you your names out. When I give your name out, please come to the podium, identify yourself and your address, and speak your piece. We'll start with Tina.
Abadacola.
Thank you. Abadacola. Come on up, Tina.
Thank you very much for having me tonight and letting me talk. I am at 29 West 470 Emerald Green Drive, along with some of my neighbors. I'm actually here because I am, for those of you who may or may not know, we've had a retention wall project that's been going on for about a year and a half now, and I actually live right behind the wall. I have pictures of every morning, I'll give these to you guys, of what it looks like. It was frustrating for a long time to have that, however, it became a safety issue. My neighbor had a stroke over the summer. She lives up on the second floor, and she now has a chairlift. She also is on oxygen. So, we're on a backup. I don't know if you know that as well, but we found out through ComEd this whole time, which is the equivalent to us driving on the highway on a spare tire for a long time, if you will. Our lights flicker, they go out occasionally, and to a certain extent, it is what it is. However, on behalf of my neighbor who can't be here, if she gets stuck upstairs, she has no oxygen and she can't get down. So, in my opinion, it is the responsibility of ComEd and whoever needs to get this done for us. It's been far too long, and we don't care whose fault it is, we just want it done. To piggyback off that then later, Megan Paulson is our Association President, who can kind of give you a little more detail that I'm not privy to as a resident. So, thank you. I'm going to leave these with the boss.
Very good. Thank you, Tina. Megan, would you like to come up, please?
Hi, my name is Megan Paulson, and I'm at 2 South 435 Emerald Green Drive, here in Warrenville. As Tina said, a year ago this month, the electricity went out due to the fact that our contractor hit a wire. Therefore, ComEd came out, unbeknownst to myself, I didn't realize they had put us on a temporary line. I thought the line they hit, they fixed. So, we kept trying to get the contractor to come out and finish the wall, and they said, oh, no, no, we can't, because it's not fixed. I says, yes, it is fixed. They have electricity. No, no, no. So, through the months, we found out they put us on a temporary backup. A big thank you to Deborah Swenden. She kind of played liaison between our property manager and ComEd, going back and forth. And through all the emails, it kind of started, when April came around, it's like, well, why isn't this ball rolling? Why is this wall still here unfinished? What we found is, well, ComEd issued a work order. So, a work order to me means one thing, and it means something kind of different to ComEd, so we kept trying to track stuff through the thing, and spring came into summer, et cetera, et cetera. We finally had a meeting with ComEd, the property manager, myself, and four people from ComEd in August, and they said, oh, well, yeah, you guys are on a backup line. It's important that we get this line fixed. Yeah, we know. So, they said, okay, we, you can have us do the boring for the conduit, or whatever you want to call it, that pipe that goes through and they pull the wire through, or you can have us do it, or you can get your own contractor, but if you have us do it, we'll send you a contract and a cost, and we won't do anything until you pay the money. We said, okay, fine. So, we waited a couple of weeks. They finally got the contract out. We got that on a Thursday. Monday morning, I look out my window, and I says, oh, they're out there fixing this. So, I thought, gosh, they got that contract back to ComEd quick. So, I called our property manager, and I says, did you send that contract back to ComEd, because they're out there doing work? And they said, no, we didn't. And their contract said, we won't do any work until you cut the check and sign the contract. Said, okay. So, we called our attorney, our condo attorney, and she put in a cease and desist. Well, the contracting company for ComEd finished up their boring. It was a two-day thing, and then that was it. And since then, we've been going back and forth, and we said, we never signed a contract, and you started this work. Now what? And we, it's kind of like, you don't hear anything. So, finally, ComEd came back and says, well, if you want, the price they quoted was $38,000. We said, well, that seems a little high. Fine, if you want to go get another bid, we'll look at that bid, and we'll let you know if we accept it or not after we analyze it. We said, okay, fine. So, we got a bid, sent it in to them, and now we're waiting for a response from them to find out, will you accept this bid? Therefore, until they now get their money, they won't do the rest, the final piece of it. So, we're kind of in limbo, waiting for ComEd to get back to us, but bottom line is, we'd like, they're very slow, we'd like to play ball with them, and it's extremely hard. We go through our attorney to speak to their attorney, so that's where we're at. So, anything, any suggestions or any ideas you have, we're receptive. And anybody have any questions?
I think we're good, but John, would you like to add something? I know we've been making some effort on your behalf. ComEd is always interesting to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Tina had contacted me on Thursday, and I didn't even realize our staff had been so involved previously. I knew they were working on something with some ComEd issues in the summer, and I was apprised of that recently, but I am working with the External Affairs Manager, who works for the city. I consider it kind of a liaison or an ombudsman role to deal with issues like this. The unfortunate thing is, and I talked to her at length on Friday, I've been emailing her since then, the unfortunate thing is, it's a holiday week, so everybody who can do something, it seems right now at that end, is off for a few days. As I was talking to you before the meeting, it's been a year already, so a couple of more days won't change much, we hope, but we're working with you, we're working with them to try to work with you, put a little more pressure on them, and hopefully this can get resolved. There's just something, even she has said, it's a little odd that it got delayed in so many different places. Seems it sat on, as I understood from, you called me this morning, thank you, filled in a lot of gaps on this. It sat on somebody's desk, apparently there, for quite a while when they were on some kind of leave, so we're working with you. We've got the information. We'll keep pushing to try to get this resolved. This just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, and if you have any questions or anything, you can always reach me or our property manager.
Yes, and I have all that information now, and unfortunately Deborah is away for, but we're going to keep working with you, and we'll get it addressed. I never make promises, I never overpromise, so we will keep working on it and hope to get it done quickly.
Yeah, you know, when we started this, it's kind of like, it starts, and until you kind of stop and look back, and it's like, oh, my gosh, I should have, would have done it this way, but when you're in that whole process, you know, you think, okay, they'll work with us, and I'll go along, and it's just kind of like, definitely a learning curve. Definitely. Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do our best, and we've had some success in the past with ComEd, with the city getting involved and applying pressure, so we'll do our best to try to get this resolved for you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Bill Price. Bill?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have an item which is an information item rather than seeking action immediately. I'm here on behalf of the River Oaks Improvement Association, which is the homeowners association for the neighbors of Emerald Green, River Oaks, so this is your DuPage River Day. We have a set of storm drains, which are in the common areas of River Oaks, but which is a letter I sent to you, Mr. Mayor, and have copied to the council and to city staff, points out was actually transferred to the city. So, this is city property at issue. There's a blockage in the storm drains. I understand the city staff is working on a specific solution to it, and we're in discussion with the city attorney. I'd like to thank the city attorney and Alderman Goodman for assistance on this so far, and this is for the council's information. We have copies of my letter if any members need it. Otherwise, that's all we have to say at this point, except to introduce the important person, which is my wife. We both live at 2S 512 River Oaks Drive. She is the president of the homeowners association. I'm the peon. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, and hope to get that resolved also, so we're working on it. And last but not least, Bob Seibert.
Item I this evening is the Lexington development. If we compare TIF 1 with TIF 4 to see the risk and motivation, the risk for the taxpayer, the motivation for the developer. In TIF 1, the risk was zero. In TIF 4, the risk is 78 percent. This is identified in the city's document, which is Exhibit D. If we look at Exhibit D, which was presented last Monday night, we see it states funding source and amount. There's only one problem. If you waive a permit fee, you don't have any money. If you waive a building fee, you haven't collected any funds. Yet, on Item D, you're identifying these dollar amounts as payments for infrastructure at the beginning of the development for Lexington, and even state in the description that the city will pay the contractors, but you have no money there. So, what you have to do is the cash that you are putting in is $657,000 from the hotel motel balance, and you're putting in a water capital reserves of $98,200. When you add in the permit waivers, because you don't have the money, you have to attribute, attain that from the fund balances, you then come up to a total expenditure of $1,421,000. So, you, the city, are voting tonight to spend $1.4 million if it is contracted with Lexington for that development, just for the infrastructure. That is where you receive the 78 percent risk. The lower you can get to zero, as opposed to a high number, you eliminate the risk to the taxpayers, you increase the motivation to the developer, because he has more money at risk. He then waits for the TIF payments, which he only receives when buildings are built. Time is of the essence in any type of TIF or development. You must reduce the time, increase the motivation, to have it work properly. That's what was done in TIF 1. Here, there's some problems. First of all, I think the city council should have been told that they're spending $1.4 million. Secondly, there's a statement that says there will be conveyance of city-owned property, Wheeler property, given to the developer for zero price. I knew Jim Wheeler, I can assure you, he never gave anything away. So, the city paid for this. That should be in the document, showing all of the benefits that the city is giving to the developer. The developer wants a 6.8 percent interest, saying this cashed value of dollars. When a city has spent $1.4 million, the developer's land, road, 106 lots, will pro- six lots will probably be worth three times what the developer is waiting for in TIF, which is four hundred thousand dollars. I think that city councils should attain the total amount, find out, because it's stated in these documents that the money will come from fund balances, appropriate fund balances, but doesn't identify which fund balances. Also states in here that there could be an actual fund established to pay these figures. So the city is paying what normally would be paid by a developer with the city's funds, which is fine. However, I believe not only the city council, but also the citizens should know the total impact in the particular fund balances that will be reduced. There are no identifications. We have the dollar amounts, they're in Exhibit D. We don't have the other items. Again, it's the best economic principles to have the risk factor as low as to zero as you can get. You've then protected the taxpayers. You've also taken efforts to motivate the developer.
Thank you, Bob. Move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. A bit of sadness for Warrenville. Galusha Farms today had a big fire that eliminated their straw barn. Fortunately, it was contained just to that barn, did not spread to the main barn, did not spread off their property. Sadly, it involved the destruction of thirty thousand bales of hay, which is no small amount. We made the news sadly. We're feeling really bad for the burning. Steve Burning, I'm sure, worked very hard to get that thirty thousand bales together. That's a huge loss for them. There was no loss of life or injury, or no animals hurt, fortunately. It's still quite a loss for Galusha Farms, so we just wanted to pass along our condolences for that loss and let the Burnings know that the community's with them, and we're glad that it wasn't worse, although thirty thousand bales is pretty bad. On a happy note, Thanksgiving is just around the corner. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so on behalf of the city council, in case anyone else doesn't mention it, happy Thanksgiving. Hope you have a good family time and some downtime. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. A resident of Maple Hill posted a picture of a beautiful coyote this morning, put it on Facebook. It looks very healthy, and the reason I bring this up is that he's doing his job catching rodents and things that coyotes do. But be aware of not letting your small pets out by themselves in any place in Warrenville. I live on the east side of town. They're walking down my street every once in a while, too. So any, any small pet should not be left out at any time of the year. Secondly, I want to thank publicly Warrenville and Bloom. We put the, filled the planters out here at the end of the sidewalk on Stafford Place, and we put some holiday glitter and seasonal decorations in the planters at the end of Stafford Place. So that added, I think, to the holiday decorations. We don't normally talk about new businesses in town, but I want to bring this up. It's called Button Man Printing, and they've moved into the Warrenville Bank, MB Bank Building. And that's been empty for so long that I think we need to welcome them to Warrenville, filling a vacant spot. They do printing and T-shirt printing and a very variety of cups and whatever promotional items that you might want. And their grand opening is this Friday, Black Friday, at nine AM, and I'd like to welcome them to Warrenville. And then lastly, Thursday is Thanksgiving Day, and we at Trinity Lutheran offer a free Thanksgiving dinner to anyone. If you don't have family that you can go to that day and would like a home-cooked meal, we will have that for you. We start at noon until we run out or two o'clock. So we're on the corner of Curtis and Warrenville Road, Warrenville Road, and you are all welcome to join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
Nothing to add.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and also to mention that along with giving thanks, you can also give to charity. The WDSRA, our wonderful local organization for special recreation, is having a big funding drive right now. I just want to encourage everybody, they've got a matching gift campaign going on, and I want to encourage everybody to, if not this organization, then some other one, you know, remember at a time of year when, when we have a lot, you know, not everybody does, and there's a lot of great organizations out there that are worthy of your support. And I think their website is wdsra.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Attorney?
No report.
Is that true, John? City Administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening then. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen city council regular meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Alderman Hoffman?
I'd like to pull off six I.
I. Okay, the motioner?
Agreed.
Agreed. Motioner and seconder, agree to that change? Okay, so we have the agenda approved with one alteration for this evening. Yes, Alderman Bavir?
I'd like to approve six K.
K, okay, we're on to another one.
Agreed.
Okay, seconder?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other changes before I call for a vote? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed, and the agenda is approved as amended for this evening. We have two sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the minutes of the November fifth, two thousand eighteen city council regular meeting, and to approve the minutes of the November twelfth, two thousand eighteen community development committee of the whole regular meeting.
Second.
Motion is second on the minutes. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening. Item six A, accept plan commission and zoning board of appeals recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O two zero one eight dash five two, approving special use permits for gas station and drive-through facility in B four zoning district, zoning and sign ordinance variation, and final site plan for Thornton's development at the corner of Route fifty-nine and Duke Parkway. B, accept community development committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O two zero one eight dash five three, approving an amendment to the stormwater and floodplain ordinance section fifteen dash five five point E, I guess point E, that's a new one, and a revised stormwater facility management agreement and covenant. C, accept community development committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O two zero one eight dash five four, approving a budget amendment for the Duke Realty off-site public utilities reimbursement in an amount of two hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars. D, accept senior civil engineer Hockings recommendation and pass resolution R two zero one eight dash five two, approving the reduction of the public improvements bond for the Duke Realty project and placing the project into the two-year maintenance period. E, accept senior civil engineer Hockings recommendation and pass resolution R two zero one eight dash five three, approving the reduction of the public improvements letter of credit for the Stafford Place project. F, accept community development committee recommendation and pass resolution R two zero one eight dash five four, consenting to a sublease to Sprint Comm Incorporated by T-Mobile USA Tower LLC at three south, three forty six, six Magna Drive. G, accept community development committee recommendation and pass resolution R two zero one eight dash five five, approving an addendum to the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding the Route fifty-six reconstruction project. H, accept community development committee recommendation and pass resolution R two zero one eight dash five six, approving an agreement with Engineering Resources Associates Incorporated for the preliminary phase one engineering design of the replacement Mack Road Bridge over the west branch of the DuPage River in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents. J, accept community development committee recommendation and accept the Trailhead Work Group recommendation and authorize staff to negotiate a professional services agreement for the preliminary engineering design for Trailhead Project Option One. L, accept community development committee recommendation and approve reimbursement payment to Duke Realty in the amount of two hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars. M, receive and file minutes of the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission regular meeting held on October ninth, two thousand eighteen. N, receive and file draft minutes of the plan commission and zoning board of appeals regular meeting held on November eighth, two thousand eighteen. O, receive and file report of invoices paid up to November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen in the amount of eighty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars and five cents. P, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before December third, two thousand eighteen in the amount of three hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and forty-five cents. And Q, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of October, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of six thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move back then to item six I. Would someone like to bring that forward and make the motion? Alderman Widener?
Should I move to accept the community development committee recommendation and authorize staff and the city's redevelopment attorney to negotiate a detailed city assistant redevelopment agreement with Lexington Homes based on recommended scope and structure of city assistance and draft term sheet documents prepared by Community and Economic Development Director Mensah dated October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Discussion?
Yeah, I originally took it off, was going to take it off because of, I don't believe in these tests, you know, they're raising our taxes, and, but as the resident, Mr. Bob Seibert brought up, as far as we're missing information on it, we got incomplete information. I think maybe I should make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this to another later date until we get proper information on this, or at least certainly figure out what's going on.
Yeah, we already have a motion on the floor, so how do we handle this? City Attorney?
There was a move, was there a second?
There was a second on the motion on the floor, yes.
Okay. Right, he's making a new motion while there's a motion pending. So the question is, do you want to amend the main motion?
Can we amend the motion? Sure. I'd like to amend the motion to postpone this to another time until we have complete information.
Okay, do we have a second? No second, so we're back to the original motion. Okay, does everyone understand then what we're voting on? The original motion here? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to six K. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Bavir?
I'd like to make a motion, accept community development committee recommendation and authorize staff to distribute the EDR, recommended request for proposals for the purchase or lease and commercial redevelopment of city-owned tack of land in the southwest Route fifty-nine corridor tax increment financing district number four.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Discussion? Alderman Ashauer?
I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, roll call again, please.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer, abstain, sorry. Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business. We do, however, have the need for a closed session this evening, so if my, could I have a motion and the citation, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of five ILCS one twenty slash two, parentheses, five, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second.
Okay, multiple seconds. Take your choice. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you. We will not be conducting any business after our executive session this evening, so you're free to go about your personal business. Thank you for your attention, as always, and again, happy Thanksgiving.